Howells Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, October 3rd, 2022. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching their decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you could press *9 to raise or lower your hand and *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bear?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We have a new member. Would you kindly, you know, take the floor and swear in the new member?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Parisi.
Mr. Parisi, yes, for the benefit of the public, Mark Parisi is our new member. Mr. Parisi, can you raise your right hand so we could see you? See it and repeat after me. I, Mark Parisi.
I, Mark Parisi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Reform all the duties of the position.
Form all the duties of the position.
Of zoning board member, alternate two.
Of zoning board member, I believe it's alternate one.
It is alternate one. Sorry if I put two.
Yeah, alternate one. That's the form said. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Then I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
To help me, God.
So help me, God.
Welcome, sir.
Congratulations, Mark.
Congratulations, Mark. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Parisi.
So, Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Kanter?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
He's on mute for some reason.
Jim, you're muted. I'll skip him for now. Mr. Orozco, I have not heard from. Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Mr. Parisi?
Here.
Mr. Rebel?
Here.
And Chairman Sayah?
Here.
You have a quorum. Mr. Moretti, can you announce your presence at the meeting? I don't know. Jim, your camera and your audio are not working. Well, you have a quorum, so you can start the meeting. And just to let everyone know, Glenn Gurken is in tonight covering for Charlie Kunliffe, and Isabel Rodriguez is covering for Jennifer Bean.
Thank you, Eileen. Will everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Bear, can you please swear in the professionals?
Yes. Can you, Isabel and Glenn, raise your right hand? Do you swear that? Oh, wait. You there, Glenn? Is it Glenn? I'm sorry. Mr. Gurken?
Yes.
We're swearing you in. Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
I do.
Your professionals are sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bear, before we move forward with the approval of minutes, you know, Mr. Nansen has resigned as chairman for his own personal health and reasons. We have a vacancy of the chairmanship. There is a new member, so we have a full slate of membership presently. So how do you recommend we proceed?
Well, there's two ways the board can go here. It's really up to the board if there's, we would generally, you'd open it up for nominations for chairman, and then we close it for nominations, and then we go to vote, and we do the same for vice chairman. If the board wants to have a personnel discussion in executive session before that, we can go into executive session under the law to do that. If you think there's a consensus among the board as to who wants to serve in these positions, then we could just go ahead, so.
I think we can probably just go ahead then. So I would ask, you know, the pleasure of the board since you know that the chairmanship is vacant. You know, I would accept nominations for many of the board members, you know, for, you know, for anyone who wants to be chairman.
And this would be through year, this would be through year end.
Right, correct. And this will all happen again in January.
That's right.
Okay, then at this point, members of the board, I feel bad, and I'm gonna miss Chairman Nansen, but it's time to move on. During the last six months, we've had somebody step into his shoes and I think has done an outstanding job, and I think it's only fitting that he continue as actually officially our new chairman. So I would like to make a nomination of Paul Sayah to chairman of the Howell Township Zoning Board.
Love to second that, if I may.
And before we go to vote, are there any other nominations before we do that? Seeing none, we could, Mr. Chairman, you could close the nominations.
All right, I'm closing the nominations. Eileen?
Well, then I would redo the Mr. Merton's nomination and second by Mr. Hughes, right? Because that was just for the, and then we'll vote.
For the chairmanship, correct. And so I think Eileen can have a roll call.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes, well, I thank everyone's confidence. You know, hopefully we'll have a smooth transition to the end of the year. And, you know, I look forward to everyone working together and learning and helping and making sure that we do our due diligence in the, in our, what I call the quasi-judicial hearings that we do have. With that being said, so now the vice chairmanship is vacant. And, you know, for a long time, Mr. Mertens has been the zoning board secretary, and he has been the right arm of the chairman, especially during the hearings when we were in town hall, and he constantly getting up and down from his chair, signing documents, doing all those other things.
But so much on Zoom, Paul, but.
Yeah, I know. But I, you know, with that being said, I'd like to nominate Mr. Mertens to be the vice chair.
I'd like to second that, too, please.
And then before we take a vote, are there any other nominations?
Not hearing any.
Seeing none, I think you could go to vote now, Eileen, on Mr. Mertens as vice chair.
Thank you. Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Jim Moretti is on screen now in her denomination. I can vote now.
Are we up to now? Do we have a vote? We have a vote from the alternate, Mr. Moretti already.
Yeah. Well, we'll get you the next time, Jim. We didn't really.
We'll get you the next time, Jim. So now.
What was the alternate? What were you talking about?
Mertens is the alternate, Sayah's the chairman.
No, I'm saying Mr. Parisi's on as an alternate member who was voting in your absence early till you were able to get on, that's all.
Oh, okay, very good.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I thank you for your confidence, and I look forward to assisting you, Paul, for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Merton. As you know, that I'm going to probably, is struggling to make the November 14th, and then, you know, meeting, I'll do my best, and then, of course, December 12th, I'm requesting to be excused, so.
Well, if you need a ride, Paul, I'll get it for you.
You'll have, you'll have it.
Don't worry about it. You'll recover.
All right, great, thank you. So now, the secretary of the board is now open. It's an open position, and I would like to make a nomination that Mr. Hughes be the board secretary. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kanter, thank you. Any other nominations for board secretary? Not hearing any. Andy, we can have a.
Yep, correct. And then I guess Mr. Moretti is present, so I'll ask our alternate to stand down on this vote. Because we'll have seven.
Well, doesn't the full board get to vote while we have this?
So we don't oppose that either.
Only seven can vote, so the alternate one will vote, but not alternate two.
Got it.
Well, you're right, but, correct, but we have Mr. Moretti now, so we have seven without, right?
No, we only have six.
Count the heads in the box here. I think I overcounted. Got it. Okay.
Okay, all right, so.
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Eileen, thank you. Before we move forward, I would request that you update the membership roster?
Yes, I will. And I'll also update the positions on the agenda, which is why we were hoping we could get this done tonight.
Yes, so this way it's a little cleaner as it presents itself in future meetings.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next, on the agenda is item number five, Approval of Minutes. This is the regular meeting dating back to July 25th, 2022. Eligible voters are Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Stanton, Rebel, and Sayah. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make that motion.
Ready? You got a second? Stanton? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved.
Eileen, do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Do we have any correspondence?
I don't believe so. The only item we had up for correspondence was to appoint a new chairman, so we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we're on item number eight, and these are resolutions that need to be ratified. So case number 18, TAC 23 Sierra Papa Home Sweet Home Daycare Center, Inc., resolution granting minor site plan. Eligible voters Kanter, Hughes, Merton, Moretti, Stanton, Rebel, and Sayah. May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Mertens?
I'll second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is case number BA 22-10. This is the Root 70 Properties LLC. It's a resolution granting bulk variance for pylon sign. Eligible voters Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Stanton, Rebel, and Sayah.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Hughes.
I'll second that.
Kanter, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. So now we have last for resolutions to be ratified, case number BA 18-03. This is Clearview Equities LLC. This is a resolution granting a one-year extension of time on bulk variance approvals. Eligible voters Kanter, Hughes, Mertens, Stanton, Rebel, and Sayah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mertens and Hughes, roll call, please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, so now, applications before the board. Item number nine, Extension of Time. This is case number BA 13-15 Alpha. It's GF United Realty LLC, requesting an extension of time. The description, "Application of GF United Realty LLC as applicant seeking a one-year extension of time through December 23, 2023 of conditional use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval received via resolution memorialized on December 14, 2020 to construct a 1,910 square foot addition to the north side of the existing building, on the north side of the existing auto repair car rental building, and enclose an exterior large vehicle lift, remove an existing dwelling and expand the use onto Lot 14 and construct a parking lot, driveways, lighting, signage, and stormwater management basin with associated site improvements on Lot 14. Both lots were consolidated and will use, with the use on premises known as Block 141, Lots 1301, 14, 414, US Highway 9 South."
We have attorney David.
Weinstein?
Yes. I'm also supposed to be joined by Mr. Plasanka, who's our engineer.
Okay.
Is, Mr. Roboto, do you see him in your queue?
Yes, I'm bringing him in.
Thank you.
While we're doing that, Mr. Gurken?
Yes, Mr. Kunliffe has reviewed the request for the extension. The main thing he notes is that the applicant has yet to submit for resolution compliance, and he feels the applicant should provide testimony regarding the factors which has delayed the applicant from pursuing, pursuing resolution compliance and to give the status of all the outside agency approvals.
Mr. Gurken, I also am seeing stormwater, a stormwater management basin on this application.
But it's only for an extension of time. He's already gotten his approval.
Understood, okay. I just wanted to make sure that it's gonna meet the latest and greatest of the state requirements.
Don't touch your hand.
Mr. Chairman, if you do not mind, I'd like to turn over my testimony, Mr. Plasanka, who's our engineer, who could better testify as this matter.
Okay, Mr. Bear, would you please swear in Mr. Plasanka?
Mr. Plasanka, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Do.
The witness is sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Plasanka, can you give us your credentials quickly, please?
Licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since about 50 years now. I've appeared before this board before many other boards in Monmouth Ocean County.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Plasanka. Are you going to be presenting as the professional engineer here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Then we can proceed, Mr. Weinstein.
Mr. Plasanka, feel free to take the floor now.
Yes, my client, Gene Fleischer, GNF, got approval from the board in 2020 in December, and the engineer that got the work done for him has not been available to proceed for compliance for almost two years. I talked to him, and we're not sure if the pandemic was the issue, what was the issue? So Gene, the client and owner, asked me to take over the project and do compliance. So back in the August of this year, I wrote to Charlie Kunliffe. I outlined some of the issues I had, and we're working on the plans right now, and we hope to get back to Charlie or Glenn with revised drawings very shortly for the compliance and the other outside agencies. So we asked for a one-year extension of time, and at the same time, the resolution approval indicated that the proposed electric vehicle charging station display a sign saying "Not Available for Public Use." Now, since 2020, that's been changed around. There's a lot more legislation, and now they're making them open for the public. So we want that part of the resolution changed at the board's discretion in the future, but not this evening. We're just asking for the one-year extension of time so we can do compliance.
And that's, that's, that's the bottom line up front. That's where we're at. Mr. Agiar?
Yes, sir.
You have any issues with this application?
I do not.
Okay. Fellow board members, do you have any questions? No?
One thing I might interject, Mr. Chairman, with the electric vehicles. There's been all new state regulations pertaining to those, and our office has no objection to the use by the general public for this two charging stations that they propose.
Respectfully, would the board consider not only approving the extension of time, but also allowing us to amend the variance to allow for the use of the EV charging station, the two, for public use to allow my clients the benefit of the numerous state and federal grants for a public electric charging station? It also would be of great benefit to attach a panel to advertise on the right corridor that there is a public electric vehicle charging station available to them, and it would not affect dramatically anything in our plans, because it would just be open to the public versus just being used for water repair.
Wouldn't you have notice, wouldn't you have notice issues if you're altering the conditions of the variance that wasn't part of your application? I'm not sure how we do that tonight.
Why don't we respectfully to the board, after this meeting with the board's permission, I'll be in communication with Mr. Roboto, and we could proceed as the board would see fit in compliance with all appropriate state and federal regulations to then represent the board, just place the board, making the board aware that we plan to pursue that avenue strictly for that purpose and nothing further, just letting you know about it, if that is okay with the board.
Mr. Bear, would you accept that?
Well, yes.
Okay. Isabel, do you have any concerns?
No, not at the moment.
Okay. So, my fellow board members, no questions.
Do we, are we clear on they're coming back for the EV portion, or are we just, I'm a little confused at the moment?
If you feel at the pleasure of the board that you would like to go ahead and provide an extension of time, Mr. Bear said it's permissible for us to go ahead and grant Mr. Weinstein and the applicant, you know, the modification to allow for public two electric charging vehicle stations in the, as was previously modified towards the resolution, you know.
So noticing wouldn't be an issue?
No, I'm not. I thought, I thought Mr. Weinstein was suggesting was gonna get worked out through the engineering for office, like it's through resolution compliance. Is that what you were saying or something?
Yes, what I was saying was that my understanding is that rather than dealing with the notice issue and all the issues today, we apply strictly tonight for the extension time of one year, and then coordinate with the town as to the appropriate mechanism, probably reappearing in front of the board, then on proper notice to the public, and then apply for the modification of the variance. But it's just more of a notice thing that lets you know we're coming.
That makes sense.
Yep, so we would punt on the EV issue till there's notice, until Mr. Weinstein's office works that out with T and M in terms of what, and then he'd come back.
Thanks for the clarification. Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
So then what is the pleasure, what is the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we go ahead and grant the extension of time.
I'll second.
So we have Hughes and Merton, and that's to grant the extension of time with the understanding that the applicant will be working with the township planner, engineer on the electrical vehicle side of the house, and coming back to the board.
Correct.
Eileen?
Roll call?
Please.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Weinstein, you got it. We'll see you soon, hopefully, and, you know, we'll meet those new federal mandates.
Thank you. I thank the board for its courtesy and giving, granting us this extension. I look forward to appearing in front of you again in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Eileen, next up on the agenda is case number BA 18-33. This is the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, Extension of Time. Description, "Application of Prince of Peace Lutheran Church as applicant and owner seeking a one-year extension of time on a minor subdivision approval granted on May 13th, 2019, known as Block 59, Lot 5, 434 Aldridge Road." Eileen, who do we have?
We have Alan Kaplan is the attorney for Prince of Peace.
Mr. Kaplan?
And he is brought into, there you go.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to withdraw from this because Mr. Kaplan is a, my personal represents, represent, legal representative. So I don't want to take any chances of.
Right. So Mr. Moretti, you could just recuse yourself.
Correct, and I'm doing.
Okay.
All right. So then, Mr. Rebel, you'll be on this one. So, Mr. Kaplan, do we have anyone else that we're bringing on?
I believe Mr. Companion and some other members of the church are going to appear tonight.
Eileen?
I gave them the Zoom information.
Anyone else?
Well, I can go forward. They might be just listening and having calls getting on.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for hearing our application. And Mr. Saya, congratulations on your, for as chairman, known you for over twenty years. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
I'm here representing the local church, the Prince of Peace Church. We need an extension of time because it has taken an undue amount of time to get through all the government agencies, especially the New Jersey Department of DEP. The last thing that was holding us up was we had to get the approval to hook up to the, for the two lots to hook up to the sewer in the street. We made the application to the Howell Township Sewer Department, paid the fees, paid all the application stuff, costs, and we were approved. Then it had to go to the Madison Square River Sewage Authority. And the church paid the fees and the professional fees and all that, and it got approved. Then it went, had to go to the Ocean County Sewage Authority as we follow the trail of sewage down the line. And they paid their fees and all that. There was a delay in there. There was some back and forth between whether they got everything, they got it, they didn't get it, between the engineers and the Ocean County Sewage Authority. But I got involved, it got cleared up, and it was approved. Then it went to the New Jersey DEP for their final approval. And that's why we're here tonight, because that was, in all honesty, a total nightmare. It lingered there for well over, for at least a year, I would say. I'm not going through the exact dates. It felt like longer. It was just lost there. You couldn't, you could not get a person to get on the phone. You could not get anyone to respond to my letters. And it was just a matter of, you know, continuous prodding and prodding until we finally got, just recently, the approval from the DEP. So now the only thing that's left now is, now that it's been approved, is to get the numbers from the Engineering Department of Howell as to how much the bond has to be for and get the bond posted. And then we would be in full compliance.
Wow. Mr. Gurkin? Talk to us, Mr. Gurkin. That's a long process.
Yeah. Mr. Kuntliff has indicated that he previously has reviewed the plans and that from our local standpoint, they have met the resolution compliance items. He, he does indicate, just as the attorney has just mentioned, that it's been a long drawn out extensive delays up at NJDEP, and it was under his understanding that they now finally have satisfied them. Plus Madison Square River Sewage Authority, Ocean County Sewage Authority. And then that, he does indicate that there is some additional application fees and escrow fees to be paid by the applicant. But he feels all the resolution compliance items required by the board and by his prior reports have been, been met.
Thank you, sir. It's about time.
Yeah.
Fellow board members, does anyone have any questions on this?
No, this is a shame.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no issues here, sir.
Yeah. I remember this one. And yeah, anytime you're dealing with, you know, if you're not doing the sewage in bulk, right? Just moving the line, it's a, we're extending the line, it's a.
Just hoping up to a line in the street.
That's all it is.
We didn't have to make any changes or do any adjustments to anything to appease the DEP. It's just a matter of delay to get somebody to actually look at the file and do something.
Okay. All right. So what's the, we're asking for extension of time. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant that requested extension.
We got Mr. Cantor?
I'll second because it sounds like they've been doing a lot of hurdle jumping. So.
Mr. Martin?
I'll give you a second on that.
Thank you. Eileen?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton? You're muted, Bill.
Sorry, I was having a problem. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
And Chairman Saya?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Kaplan, best of luck.
Always a pleasure.
Okay, we got through those two. Now we have the the bulk variance accessory improvements application. This is case number BA twenty-two dash thirteen. Giuseppe Turricano, bulk variance and accessory improvements. Let me read it out for the board. Application of Giuseppe Turricano as applicant and owner seeking and as applicant and owner of twenty-six Alexis Drive, otherwise known as Block One Eighty-four, Lot Forty-two dot sixteen, seeking bulk variance relief for the construction of an expanded paver patio around an existing swimming pool as well as for associated pavilion, exterior fireplace, exterior cooking station, retaining wall, vinyl fence, masonry pillars, accessory shed, driveway expansion, and hot tub improvements. Other associated improvements include landscape wall, paver walkway, resurfacing of the asphalt driveway, and new paver in Belgium block curb and paver driveway apron. This property was previously before the board in two thousand and five and was granted bulk variance approval for other accessory improvements. The expiration date is December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two on this application.
We have attorney Rick Brodsky. Mr. Brodsky, do you need anyone else brought into the meeting?
Yes, thank you. I have with me Mark Lieber, who is our engineer and planner. L-E-B-E-R. Yeah, from East Point. I also have Justin Tal, T-A-L.
Okay.
Who's a landscape designer and landscape architect. And I also have the homeowner, Joe Turciano, should be on there as well.
He's probably on just as Joe, it looks like.
Yep.
And they should all be in the meeting now. And they can turn on their audio and video.
Good evening.
Hi.
Justin?
Hey, Justin, how are you?
East Point Engineering, we need video and.
Yep.
There we go.
You're on. Great.
And Joe needs audio and video.
Joe's on his cell phone, so it may take him a moment.
Okay.
Hello?
We can hear you. We can't see you. Can you start your video?
Give me one second.
There you go.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so since we have the applicant and the two professionals, I would ask Mr. Bear to swear them in, please, in bulk.
Okay. So Mr. Tal, Mr. Lieber, and Mr.
Turciano.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and help you God?
Yes.
Can you please, starting with Mr. Tal, state your name for the record and then spell your last?
Justin Tal, T-A-L.
And then Mr. Lieber?
Mark M-A-R-C, Lieber, L-E-B-E-R.
And then Mr. Turciano.
Giuseppe Turciano, T-U-R-R-I-C-I-A-N-O.
All witnesses are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. Mr. Brodsky?
Yes.
Who's presenting first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant. Congratulations to the chair and vice chair for your new roles. Yes, as, as was indicated, Mr. Chair, I do have with me this evening both Mr. Lieber and Mr. Tal to testify on behalf of the application. We'll have Mr. Lieber go first, followed up by Mr. Tal. And Mr. Turciano is here as well. If the board, if we, if, we'll see if we have any direct testimony or if the board has any questions or what have you. As the chair indicated, the application pertains to the property located at twenty-six Alexis Drive. The, the applicants have owned the property since two thousand and eighteen. And they live there with their three young children. They have not undertaken any, any improvements to the, to the exterior of the property anyway up, up until now. And obviously are proposing some, you know, a significant upgrade to the property in terms of some accessory improvements in the backyard. There are some variances associated with, with the application. And Mr. Lieber will walk the board through those variances as we walk through the application as quickly as we can. And then Mr. Tal will provide some, some details with regard to the proposal and go through some, some renderings that we have. So the board has a good picture of what's, what's being proposed. So, Mr. Chair, unless the board has any questions, what I'd like to do is, is have Mr. Lieber come forward right away and just walk the board through the site as it exists and what's proposed as part of the application.
Okay, Mr. Lieber, can you please put your credentials on the record?
Yes. Hi, good evening. I'm with East Point Engineering. Our office is in Marlboro. My background is, I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University. Following graduation, I returned to school at nighttime and completed Rutgers MBA program at the Graduate School of Management. I was licensed in two thousand and three as a professional engineer and two thousand and four as a professional planner. And following that, I completed the Certified Municipal Engineering Certificate Program. In two thousand and six, I was actually appointed to the Howell Township Planning Board by coincidence. And I also served as the chairman of the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission. I also sat on the Environmental Commission in Howell.
Mr. Lieber, so you're going to be presenting as the engineer today, tonight, correct?
Yes, and a planner.
Oh, okay. So we're going to have to make sure we have a separation of duties here, right? Because, so when you're presenting, please present as the engineer first. Let us know you're done, and then we'll give it, turn it over to Mr. Gurkin for you.
Yeah.
And then, and then when you're doing it as the planner, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez, okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay. Mark, if you would, just walk the board through as they existed. You can share your screen if you like, just to walk the board through the site as it exists. And then what's proposed as part of the application, including the variance relief that we need.
All right, great. So this is Block One Eighty-four. It's Lot Forty-two sixteen. It's twenty-six Alexis Drive, which is off of Alex Drive, and you can get to this development off of Colts Neck Road. The lot's about point four eight acres. It's zone.
Excuse me, Mark, if I could interrupt. What, what do we have on the screen now?
There was a packet provided to the board. It was eighty-six pages long. These are the color photos that begin on page twenty-seven. And these were taken in March of this year.
Right.
That whole packet is marked as Exhibit A eight.
Gotcha.
Mr. Hughes, you note that.
So.
Okay.
He's got to come over here and sign the exhibits.
All right.
Right, right. Go ahead, Mark.
Starting on page twenty-seven, this is just a view of the front of the house and the street. It's got a paver driveway. There's a, you know, stamped apron in the front. And there's a fence that was approved by a prior board action, which was done by a prior homeowner. Moving on, this is another view of the front of the house. This just shows the walkway from the driveway to the front porch. There is presently a shed at the end of the driveway. This is the shed that's there today. It's a side view of the shed.
And that's the backyard back there, right, beyond the shed?
The pools in the distance. You'll notice this retaining wall. What happens is, once you're in the back of the house and, you know, beyond the driveway, the property slopes down to the rear lot line. It's another view behind the house. These, you know, there's, I'm going to get to the photo of the pools later, but there's a pool in the distance. You can see there's a step in the patio. There's a little side door here which walks out onto the patio. This is that step I was referring to. This picture shows you the slope down from the pool patio to the rear. The property line is about three feet behind this row of shrubs on the left. Just a view from the other side of the house. There's a garden here. There's some pool equipment. And pools on the right here, obviously. It's another door into the house in the back with a set of steps. This is, I'm up to page thirty-seven. This fence shows the property line to the neighbor on the right. That's just an overall view of the pool. It's a stamped concrete patio. There's a retaining wall beyond the patio that keeps this area level. This is page thirty-nine. Forty shows the pool. And this is the last one, page forty-one, just a view back. So the pool's behind me here and the shed at the top of the driveway is in the distance, and the rear property line is on the right. If you look at the house, the average setback from the house, say, from this door to the rear property line is about thirty feet. You know, and to create any sort of usable area in the backyard and level it out, the only way to do that is to construct a series of walls. You know, we were calling them landscape walls. The walls vary in height. If you look at the variance plan, I'm going to switch to that. This was already submitted.
And this. And Eileen, is this, the plans, are they marked as A one?
The plans are marked as A five.
A five, okay.
All right, let me just make a note of that. So we're looking at A five now. This is the plan dated April sixteenth. So there's a couple of things going on in the property, which I'm going to read, I'm going to read through more or less a whole list of improvements that the owner would like to install. And I'm going to show you where that improvement is on the plan. So the first thing is, the driveway, which is paved, is going to be repaved. It's kind of breaking up the asphalt. It's the original driveway. And in addition to replacing that, they would like to put a twelve-inch paver border on both sides of the driveway, which is shown in this drawing, on the left and the right of the driveway. It says new paver border, twelve inches wide. The, the next item is the front walkway, which is presently concrete. They would like to replace with this free-form walkway. That would be in pavers. There's a series of landscape walls, the first. There's a series of landscape walls. The first wall here is a free-form wall. Along the front of the house is two feet high, and that would be to create a planting bed on the right side. Uh, and then you move to the back. The proposal was to create one linear continuous wall, starting on the right corner of the house, that goes toward the side property line on the right. Then perpendicular to the rear property line, across the rear of the property. And then would come up along the left side of the property to meet where the top of the driveway is today. There'd be two pillars there. They're three feet high. And there's a gate to a new paver walkway. Now, there is one area where this wall bumps out, and that's to accommodate a hot tub. Right now, the pool is a diving board. That would be removed. And they'd situate a hot tub just to get more walkability behind the hot tub. The wall kind of bumps out. And interspersed throughout that retaining wall are these eighty-four-inch-high pillars, which are designed to match, or look similar to the pillars that are in the front of the house. Um, and it's a, uh, ornamental decorative fence, so the aesthetics that would be, you have a fence in between pillars and the fence is see-through. Except in the back where the fence is a six-foot vinyl toward the rear. Now, there is a pavilion structure, which I'm gonna show you some rendering in a couple minutes, but that structure is fourteen by twenty-eight. It's denoted by this heavy black line. Uh, and that's directly behind the house. In order to accommodate that pavilion, there's a staircase I showed you earlier out the back of the house. That would be removed and reconstructed so that the stairs are parallel to the house. Uh, underneath that pavilion is a paver patio. Um, and there's a cooking area with a countertop that's shaped like an L. Um, and part of that would be under the pavilion itself. Part of that would be under the exposed top. There's a, um, small fireplace. It's freestanding, proposed on the left of the pavilion. And there's some patio improvements as well. Uh, let me just zoom in here. There's a fine gray line here that represents the existing edge of the pool patio. Um, and we're seeking to expand that patio directly back toward the rear lot line. And the expansion is just under seven feet of additional patio. And then the patio area underneath the pavilion is all new, so that's a new impervious area. We're proposing to remove the shed and the retaining wall that you saw in the picture. And relocate the shed to the left side of the driveway so that this area can be leveled out and planted with grass. And used as, you know, a grass area for the kids. The, um, front of the house would have like some ancillary, new landscaping and landscape lighting, uplighting to highlight the house. And when we look at the lot coverage calculations, the current impervious on the property, which includes everything, you know, the house, the porches, the pool, the patio, all the pillars, the existing retaining walls, um, stairs and landings, the shed, the driveway and the rear steps, everything added up together, including like even the air conditioner pads and the generator pad, is nine thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet. Then you add up the lot coverage on this plan here, which again, we include everything. Uh, we even include the pool equipment pad. You get eleven thousand seven square feet, so the net increase is one thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Um, and I got a chance to review the engineer's letter from T and M from August twenty-third, and there were some comments with some concern about the increase in lot coverage. Um, what we could do to attenuate that is the house itself is thirty-six hundred and fifty square feet, the footprint. Uh, the roof peak is pretty much centered along the, um, this, uh, parallel to the front wall of the house. So we could take half of the house, which is about eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, and just literally pipe that into a drywall in the back left corner. And then we would effectively capture all the additional impervious surface from the project and recharge it into the soil. Uh, and that would negate any, you know, downstream effects of increase in runoff.
Um, how much of that are you going to capture?
We would take fifty percent of the roof of the house, which is about eight hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, basically all the roof leaders in the back of the dwelling. And pipe that to a new drywall. That would be situated in the rear left corner of the property.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, now, are there any questions just up to this point before I get into the review comments?
Well, let's go through, Mark. Why don't we just walk the board through? Did you want to talk about the variances? I know a lot of the variance relief is driven by the, by the, uh, retaining walls that are necessary due to the, uh, to, due to the grading. Is that right?
Yep, so, there's a couple things. Um, if you look at this plan, north is actually to the left. So east is up, so when we talk about the rear property line, we're talking about the eastern property line here.
Correct.
So the variances that were identified are retaining wall on the north side that's over here on the left. Um, this wall is two feet high, twenty-four inches. Um, the code requires a five-foot setback to the sideline. Um, right now, the setback is just about three feet. So that's a variance. Uh, the retaining wall setback to the rear property line, it's to the east. Again, five-foot setback, and that wall is also two feet high along the length of the property.
Um, it's two feet high with a six-foot fence on top of that wall.
That's correct. The fence is six feet. And the comment in the letter was, we'll get up to admit it, is if you add a six-foot fence to a two-foot wall, it's really measured as an eight-foot-high structure combined. So the five-foot setback is, uh, variance. It appears that the wall's about one and a half feet off the line, and then the pillars themselves are a couple inches off the property line. Um, those pillars project, you know, beyond the wall. If you look at, you know, where my mouse is, you can see that the square of the pillar is wider than the width of the wall. Going on to the south side.
And Mark, what, what is, what is the property to the, to the north, the, uh, I guess to the rear of the subject property? Is that, is that that wooded area that we saw?
Yeah, it is. It's woods.
Yeah.
And I can put up a picture of that, uh, in a couple of minutes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Brodsky?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, all right, let's take a deep breath here. So you asked the question, what's back there, right? Woods-wise. Um, Mr. Aguilon?
Yes, sir.
Did you talk to, um, to Matt? And do we know the tax map on that property that sits back there?
So I'm looking it up as we speak, and it is, uh, uh, owned by a resident. Let me just double-check to see if there is a house there. So it is a residential lot, uh, nine-point-three acres.
What's its zone?
A R E two.
Okay, so, so Mr. Brodsky, that's a nine-point-three acre A R E two. You know, um, plot back there that.
There you go.
Eventually, it can, it, it can be built upon. So, you know, any encroachment to that line, to the owner's property line, you know, has to be considered.
Understood.
Um, I am showing a home on the lot, uh, Mr. Seiya.
You are?
Yes, uh, the address is two seventy-one Cranberry Road.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't see it on this aerial, but, um, I think if we zoom out.
It's lot thirty and thirty-one. He owns two lots that are adjacent to each other.
Right.
The dwellings on Cranberry, which is on the left.
Yep.
Um, I didn't want to go out of order, but I will address your comment about a future development there. I- in the town code, any subdivision that's major or any application on a property that's more than one acre, they have to provide a fifty-foot-wide continuous landscape buffer around the perimeter of those types of developments. So I, you know, we took that into account in the sense that if someone were to come in with a subdivision on this ten-acre property one day, they'd still have to leave a fifty-foot-wide perimeter buffer. Unless the Howell Township Planning Board granted them a variance, but from my experience, you know, that's highly unlikely. So, you know, I do want to point out that the woods you see here are not the client's woods. Um, but it would be expected to have someone where to develop this. Fifty feet of that woods would have to be retained. So let me just, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mark. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that what, you know, this, the, the, the situation with regards to that rear property. You were talking about the retaining walls.
I think you're up to the right side or the south side.
Yeah, the south side.
So here we go. Mr. Gurkin, I'm gonna need you to take it from here with regards to, you know, the setbacks and so forth.
Yep.
Are you gonna let him finish his testimony or you want me to jump? Unless, unless you feel it's necessary to jump in, if you feel that, you know, we're not, we're, we're skimming over anything here. No, I, I think we've covered it so far, whether he's up to, uh,
South.
The south side is because of the bump out to put in this, uh, hot tub.
Correct.
Right, so over there, I'm about two feet, three inches from this, uh, property line. Um, but where there's no bump out, I'm over five feet. Now, you know, I described earlier that the purpose of the bump out is just to get around the back of the hot tub. I mean, if we move the bump out and just get rid of it, then there'd be about two feet to walk around the hot tub. Or should I say, we comply with the five-foot setback. Could only leave about two feet to walk around the hot tub, so um, again, that was noted as variance condition. Now, moving on to the pavilion structure itself, which is again, the heavy black line here. The ordinance requires that the setback for that be equal to the height. In this case, thirteen feet, but the plan provides for eight-point-three-nine feet. Now, in the review letter, it had indicated that the cooking area shall be considered as part of the pavilion structure, in which case it looks like that setback is four-point-nine feet. Where, I guess, thirteen feet's required. To me, this is kind of a, a gray area because the cooking area is not thirteen feet high. Uh, it's like a much lower. It's about the height of your counter kitchen top. But if you go back to the actual pavilion structure itself, uh, we were asking for relief for eight-point-three-nine feet where thirteen's required. Now.
Mark, do you want to show, I, I, again, I hate to interrupt, but do you want to sh- just show a picture of the pavilion so the board members in, in context can see um, what it looks like?
Yeah, let me switch to that. I was gonna get to the renderings in a second.
Yeah.
I, I think our concern was that it almost seems to act as one structure. It's not two separate structures. The cooking area is all integral and part and parcel of the pavilion.
Yeah, that's why I think, I think, but if we take a quick look at it, it might be helpful.
The pavilion is a prefabricated structure. It's essentially six posts with a roof. Uh, so it's not, you know, a custom-built unit. It is a prefabricated unit. Mark will be able to pull up some pictures of that, and then I'll be able to show some actual photos of an as-built prefabricated pavilion. The outdoor kitchen island is essentially just a freestanding island. And it's within and, you know, adjacent to pavilion, but I'll be able to jump to that.
Yeah. Yeah, for the record, that was Justin Tal. He's up next.
Um, I'm on page fourteen of that packet that was submitted.
Which was A eight, A eight for the record.
A eight, and what you see here is a few things that we've been talking about. Um, mainly in the center, you see that pavilion structure, the kitchen area, which is the L-shaped, is also shown in this photo. Um, and then on the far right, you'll see these piers, the square piers with the vinyl fence in between them. That we were discussing, and the property line is just beyond this on the right.
That's where that wood, the woods, uh.
That's where the woods are.
Yeah.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So, you know, we do need some kind of interpretation tonight as to whether or not the setback to the pavilion is from the actual pavilion itself, which is the column for the structure, or if it's gonna be to the outdoor kitchen area, because it does, you know, affect the kind of relief that's required. Mark, you might want to just add how the pavilion is strategically.
Mr. Tal?
Yes.
Uh, can we need you to put your credentials on the record if you're going to represent the applicant at this point in time.
Absolutely. Oh, let me go through the rest of the variances and then, I know, you know, because Justin's a designer. You know, he could either answer questions about the actual layout and design, or he can discuss like how this was laid out. Um, but I want to just get through the zoning. Um, the shed, so if we go back to the variance plan, we're trying to save the existing shed. Um, and just taking it and moving it over to the left side of the driveway. The, um, requirement though for a setback is not in compliance. We're asking for a four-foot setback here. And I believe the requirement is ten feet, so that's another variance. Um, getting back to, and I'm on letter F in the T and M letter, getting back to the fence height. The cross-section of that wall in the rear was that the fence would be placed on top of the two-foot-high wall. Um, and these pillars, which are proposed, extend down to grade. The measurement of the pillar is eighty-four inches, which is seven feet, and the seven feet is measured from the patio surface to the top of the pillar. So therefore, you can say that, well, the pillar extends two feet below the patio, so it's a total nine-foot pillar. And the fence is six feet on top of a two-foot wall. That's eight feet. The ordinance limits you to six feet, so that was indicated as a variance. Um, in, from section one eighty-eight dash twelve A. The next item was the swimming pool. The code requires that if a swimming pool has a patio around it, the patio be ten feet off the lot line. Um, and presently, we are within that ten-foot area uh, along the rear of the property, um, which is basically between the existing, or the proposed edge of the patio and the proposed lot line.
And Mark, we're not proposing any changes to the, that pool is existing, right?
Yeah, the pool's existing. I mean, the setback that's proposed is about five feet, four inches. But again, the court requires ten feet. Now, the same item was noted for the right side, which is the south side, that the patio has to be ten feet to the lot line. Um, you know, and if you measure on our plan, where that little bump out is, the distance to the patio to the lot line is really three feet. Uh, and then where there's no bump out, the distance provided is about six feet, um, eight inches. And then, let me just see, I'm up to letter H.
Eileen, I think we lost Mr. Martin.
He was having trouble, but I think he got back on. Hold on. Well, I can't. I don't know if I can see him without. Hold on.
I'm gonna give him a minute.
He should be in now.
Rich, do we have you back?
Yeah, um, I was frozen for about five minutes. I only lost audio for about a couple minutes, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right. All right, all right, Mark. Yeah, you can continue.
That was, that was all the variances. Again, variances are setbacks to walls, setbacks to patios. And then we need the interpretation on the setback to the pavilion and then the setback to the shed. There's no lot coverage or building coverage variances as, actually, the zone doesn't have requirements for those.
Correct.
Um, so, really, these are ancillary bulk variances. Um, but if you have any questions as to anything that was presented so far, you know, go through those now.
Yeah, Mark, there, along the whole rear perimeter.
Yeah, Mark, there, along the whole rear perimeter, there is an existing fence.
Yes.
In fact, on both sides. Is that existing fence gonna stay there, or once the new fence goes in, you'll take, take down the old fence?
Correct, the fence is gonna come down.
Mister Lieber, this is an R-two zone?
Yeah.
And therefore, there's no impervious coverage within R-two zoning, correct?
That's correct. The ordinance does not have a requirement.
Right, but we thought, Mister Chair, we'd provide the information, you know, just for the board's edification and, and Mister Gurkin, and also. You know, we also, in that regard, as Mister Lieber testified to earlier, you know, we, he does. We, you know, the applicant does plan to, eh, provide for drainage and, and the drywells and so forth, as Mister Lieber had. Indicated earlier.
Now, I believe, eh, Mister Lieber indicated square footage of impervious. Does he have a percentage of the lot?
Uh, yeah, you know, if you give me one second, let me get you that.
Think you said eleven thousand something.
Eleven thousand and seven.
Thinking you're somewhere in the vicinity of fifty-five plus, yeah.
One oh seventy-one. It's fifty-two point two is the percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Mark, did you have anything else, eh, eh, while wearing your engineer hat?
No, I just wanted to go through all the different improvements proposed to make sure everybody understood the, understood the different facets of the project.
Sure.
You know, and I don't wanna like, start summarizing anything because I know there's gonna be more to talk about, but basically. We wanna flatten out the backyard, we wanna expand the patios and construct the pavilion with the outdoor kitchen. And then move the shed to create a grass area for the kids. And then the front, we just wanna dress up the view of the house by repaving the driveway, putting in the, um, border. You know, on both sides, and then the front walk. Um, one thing I did wanna note, which I felt was really minor. They said there's a setback requirement to the edge of the driveway, which is also five feet.
Yeah, a little bump out there.
Yeah, there's a little tiny bend right here where it's four point two-two feet. But I did a calculation, if you take the property line and draw a line parallel to it five feet in. The total encroachment in that five feet is exactly three square feet of pavers. Um, you know, I felt like that was very de minimis, but yet if it was something that created a problem. You know, we repaved the driveway, we could just kinda straighten this out to stay five feet away over there when we add the border. But, you know, three square feet seemed something that was really more or less not perceptible, but I just wanted to point that area out.
Mister Gurkin?
Uh. There's no question about it. It's within the five feet and the ordinance says it's supposed to be five feet, so I think if they can eliminate that variance, they should.
Right, cuz we're, we're, we're thinking of the neighbors, correct?
Yes.
So that's doable, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanna see where that was in the, the letter. Hold on a second. Okay, it was under, um, item four, letter A. So I'm just gonna put a note on letter A and we'll comply.
Yeah, we had like a four point three setback and you'll make it five feet.
Correct.
Fellow board members, does anyone have any questions for Mister Lieber?
Uh, Mister Chair, I, I have a quick one. I don't know if it'd be Mister Aguirre. Um, I, I know we're talking about the shed. Um, I know in, in a lot of zones, it's the height of the shed at the distance. I just wanted to get a clarification as to what the setback should be on that shed.
Uh, that is correct. Uh, the height of the shed determines the setback from the property line for any shed. Uh, over a hundred and twenty square feet or taller than eight feet high. And with regards to the question about the cooking area, one eighty-eight eleven, uh. Part C, uh, notes that, uh, the, the structure is measured from. The outside wall of the shed or any overhang or anything that protrudes out that adds to the footprint. Of that structure, so the cooking area would be included, uh, as part of the, uh, the, um, the pavilion. In the backyard.
Okay, can I, just ask, do we know how, how tall the shed is?
Let me check that. I don't know if Mark has that, but Justin Toll, the next, the next witness will have that info.
Okay, I, I can wait. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Any other board members?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it relevant to ask if the neighbors need to be consulted about their opinions on the encroachment and the setbacks?
Eileen, were the neighbors notified?
Yes. Yes, they provided notice.
They were provided notice of this.
That would be part of public comment.
Okay.
Right.
We'll get the public comment on this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I interject one more thing?
Mister Gurkin?
Uh, Mister Lieber has indicated they're gonna take half of that roof area and pipe that into some type of underground chamber. Uh, our office obviously has no objection with that, but we wanna make sure that the depth to the groundwater table and the. Permeability of the soil is also provided when they submit those calculations for that. Uh, one other thing is, uh, the plan i- is a little weak on showing some of the. Proposed grades a- around the perimeter of the site. We did now get the information that the fence, existing fence there, which is only a couple feet away, will be removed. Uh, with it, and the pictures kinda helped showing that in the rear, I guess everything slopes back into that wooded area. Uh, that's there now. Uh, I did notice in the wooded area, it looks like there's like a arborvitae or some type of green giant. Uh, trees there, which looks like the deer has had a good chewing on them up to the five-foot heights. Uh, there, uh, with it, but, eh, eh, if they can, with any revised plans to get submitted, either's the condition of approval or. Uh, if the application continued, they can provide us a little more information on the grading.
Sure. We can do that. And was it Mister Hughes who had asked about the height?
Yes, of the shed, yes.
Yeah, so it's, eh, it's slightly under eight feet. I just, I just saw it, just under eight feet.
All right, that, that's good information. Thank you.
Sure, sure, sure. Um, any other questions for Mister Lieber?
Yes, I have.
God, it's pretty young. I apologize, go ahead.
Yeah, I, could he provide some testimony if, if, if he's the correct professional regarding the outdoor kitchen and how it's gonna function with? Um, you know, whether it's on septic sewer or any drainage from the outdoor kitchen area? Is there gonna be some testimony on that?
I could elaborate on that when it's my turn.
While we get to the planner, Mister Pindel.
Well.
The landscaper.
Yeah, if, if you want Justin to, to answer that, you mean, he has some other information he wants to add. Um, you know, assuming there's no engineering question, at this point, it's probably a good time to change witnesses. It's up to you, though.
One second. Any more questions for Mister Lieber?
I do, uh, Mister Chair, uh, with regards to fencing, uh, anything that's taken down. Or replaced as far as fencing, uh, should meet pool compliance. The, the smaller fencing that's immediately around the pool. I'm not sure was approved as the actual, uh, pool fence. So I would, uh, I would ask that any, any fencing that is put up or replaced or taken down, that there is a proper barrier. Uh, placed around the pool to prevent any, uh, unforeseen accident by anybody, uh, going onto the property.
Okay, um, I'll ask the client what the purpose of the secondary fence was. Um. And then I'll get back to you.
Okay. Okay, Mister Chair, uh, Mister Lieber's not going anywhere, but, uh, if we wanna have, uh, Mister Tal sworn in.
Uh, please.
Some of these other questions answered.
Mister Tal sworn in, so Mister Tal, would you put your credentials on the record, please?
Uh, yes, I have a bachelor of science degree, uh, with a degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University, New Brunswick. And I act as a landscape designer, so this plan was designed by myself.
And your experience in, in, uh, uh, the, uh, this type of design work, Justin?
Uh, dates back to two thousand eight, when I started my landscaping company. Uh, we are a design-build firm located in Farmingdale within the Howell municipality, and, uh, we enjoy. Residing and working in the community.
Okay, so you're a landscape designer, not an architect per se?
Not a licensed architect, but that is my degree.
We'll accept you as a landscape architect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mister Chair. Okay, Justin, eh, if you would, if you could, just referring to any of the exhibits, just, uh. Walk the board through some of the details of the proposals, and you heard a couple of questions which you'll incorporate into your testimony.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Justin, Mister Parisi did have a question up front.
Right, so.
In regards to the outdoor kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, um, so currently, there is an outdoor kitchen existing off the rear of the home. Uh, we are removing that and we're going to replace that outdoor kitchen in the new proposed location. Uh, adjacent and underneath the pavilion with a natural gas line extending out the rear of home basement. Hot water, cold water sewer tying into, uh, the sewer system and obviously the water supply from the house. All of that will have new plumbing permits, trenching, roughing, pressure inspections. So it's being treated, you know, under construction permits as a new installation. Uh, but that is all being properly, uh, filed with the construction department.
Mister Parisi, does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does. So essentially, it's an extension from the house.
That is correct.
To the outdoor cooking area. All right, thank you.
Right.
Okay, Justin.
Go ahead, Jess.
All right, so what I'm basically, uh, looking to do here is relay how I came up with the design. The reasoning for some of the functions shown in the design, um, as well as show you what some of these materials look like, uh, proposed as built. Um, I'll try not to overlap too much with Mister Lieber. I think he did a great job of giving an overview of, uh, what we. Are looking to propose here on the property. Uh, Mister Teresiano and his family, they are newer residents to the community. They moved from the city of New York. In two thousand eighteen to Farmingdale, uh, with the wish and goal of having a beautiful yard and an excellent local school system. For their three younger children who are age three, four, and five. Um, so I'm gonna take you through some of the details. As you already know, there is an existing pool, retaining wall patio in the rear of yard. Looking a little closer at those items, they are nee- in need of repair structurally. And also the current design, as you had seen in the pictures from Mister Lieber, that I'll touch briefly upon, leave much of the yard unusable. Uh, there's a lack of space on the patio for furniture. You could pull a chair out too far and be falling right off the rear of the patio. There's no level space for his children to actually have any sort of swing set, playset, nothing of that sort, um. And basically, the pool was just burned up and sort of left an unsafe drop-off, uh, you know, into the yard as it's shown. Uh, the purpose of the fencing around the property, which I do feel is very important to be on top of the retaining wall. Is one, to keep the deer out, and two, uh, to apply, to be pool compliant. So, because there is about a two-foot drop-off, if that fence is not on the, uh, top of the retaining wall. You're basically a four-foot-high fence from the level of the pavers because two feet of that fence is lost if it's not on top of the retaining wall. Uh, we designed to, we designed the yard to incorporate some of the wishes of the homeowner that. Basically will improve their usage of the outdoor area. Much of the backyard is not visible from neighboring homes. We do have a professionally-designed landscape plan, re-establishing privacy trees around the perimeter of the property. Which are shown in the renderings of the packet that was provided. Um, there's, in my opinion, no detriment resulting from this improvement. We are not removing any shade trees. We're only removing landscaping plantings which are being replaced. Um, it is an improvement from the existing yard setup. And I'm going to show you some overview, uh, areas which Mark, uh, Lieber had shown as well, that do show similar-scale projects. At the neighboring homes. We're not looking for the most grandiose patio on the block. We are within the harmony of the community. Um, and just some of my last points, this has been two to three years in planning and engineering before we actually. Uh, presented it for permitting and for the variance. Um, Mister Triciano, you know, upon the pandemic beginning and COVID and everyone being home more, especially with three younger children. Uh, the usage of the yard, uh, and in general, everyone's homes has, you know, increased substantially. And that's where he really felt that, uh, there were improvements that needed to be made to the yard, uh, both for him and his family, you know, going forward. So I'm going to share my screen and, uh. See, show you some of the renderings.
And Justin, which one are you, are you putting back, uh, pulling up A eight? The, the, that long, that eight, that, that large, uh, packet?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so we're talking about A eight, and then you'll just reference the page number when, when you're referencing the page.
That's correct. Um.
Eileen, does Justin have permission to, uh, present?
Yes.
For some reason, my computer is not allowing me to. Zoom. I, I can put it up if you tell me a page you wanna. Mark, I apologize if you don't mind. Zoom is not allowing me to, uh. Go in. So let's start right there. Um, we're basically at the front of the home. Um, as Mister Lieber presented, the pillars and the fence are existing, so we are proposing some improvement of. New pavers at the entry of the driveway, Belgium block edging, and a new asphalt driveway leading up towards the garage. Um, moving onward, Mark. Uh, we're showing the shed, we're showing some retention wall around, pillars entering the rear of the yard. Uh, moving on further, we're showing landscaping improvements in the front of the home. Decorative landscape wall. A lot of this is not part of the variance, it's just background to the whole project itself. Uh, privacy trees along the right side, as mentioned, much of this is not visible from neighboring homes, so. Privacy plantings along the side, uh, fencing in the garden area, the pool equipment, the rear of the yard, all to be pool compliant. And have gates that open outward as well to, uh. Maintain pool compliance, new entry into the front of the home, again, not requiring variance, but just part of the overall visual. Aesthetics. And then moving towards the rear of the yard, uh, we're basically showing a nice level area, which is. An open lawn area for, uh, his family to use, children to use. Whereas currently existing is the shed right there in that frame and a pretty steep drop-off that doesn't actually allow. Much of usage of that area. Uh, we're leading into the backyard, vinyl fence along the rear with pillars in between. Matching the harmony of the front entry of the home, which has the fencing and the pillars as well. And you can see the professionally-designed landscaping around the rear of the yard. And the rear of the patio, uh, multi-levels to the paper patio to reduce the amount of retention. Required on the project and keep everything as low as possible. We're trying to maintain two feet of wall at a maximum. There are areas that are less. We're showing a freestanding natural gas fireplace that requires zero clearance. It doesn't allow any heat or smoke out the top. It's only for the beauty, the heat comes out of the front of the unit, so that is, uh, permissible adjacent to pavilion. Uh, the barbecue and cooking items there are placed outside of the pavilion to meet fire code. Which will be one of the, uh, permits that we apply for going forward, so that's the reason why that kitchen island is placed as it is. And not entirely below the pavilion. And again, the two levels, the freestanding pavilion and, uh, landscaping along the rear. So the fence on top of the retaining wall is providing a height that does keep the deer out. Again, we're a heavily wooded lot in the rear. And also keeps that fence at a height for children not to be hopping over or whatever. and also keeps that fence at a height for children not to be hopping over or whatever it may be. Uh, we wanna keep six feet above the level of the pavers, which in my opinion is a very safe height for a pool fence. And uh, we're gonna continue towards the pool area. So you can see here actually having space around the pool for lounge chairs, tables and chairs. Uh, whereas the current photos of the property show very limited access for any seating or anything like that. Um, we have the pumps and heater in the same location where they exist today in a fenced area hidden by trees along the uh right side of the property line. And if you continue onward, uh, Mark, that's the overview. Um, it should be known, the hot tub is about eighteen inches high from the level of the pavers. It's not a freestanding unit, which would be closer to three feet high from the level of the pavers. So this is as low profile as we can pretty much get. Um, and it's kind of fairly close to the level of the patio. It's not a large, um, you know, tall structure. And then if you do keep going down, Mark, um, actually, I'm sorry, I wanted to go back on one point. The location of the pavilion is set up. Maybe if you go up a slide or two, Mark, thank you right there. Uh, the placement of the pavilion is set in such a way that we designed both staircases off the rear of the home to allow three to four feet minimum passageway between coming out the staircase and passing by the pavilion. Um, that is a construction code, so you cannot, you know, squeeze by two feet of a passageway between the steps and the pavilion structure. So that was a a major reason in the placement of the pavilion in relation to the property line. So the homeowner wishes to have a pavilion. We see that as the only feasible location for the pavilion, given the placement of the pool and it's situated in a way that allows safe passage between, you know, connecting from the driveway, walking around to the pool and having that staircase that comes out the uh rear of the house in the background. And then, Mark, uh, if you could please continue towards the aerial views that I took some screenshots. So here you do see the home twenty-six Alexis Drive. You see the um driveway and the way it's kind of orientated on a sharp angle to the left, which is why uh we do have some minor expansion on the driveways for the car coming in and out because that is a pretty sharp angle to come up the driveway, you know, especially in the evening timing. Um, so you know, just so that is kept in mind, you can see the neighboring homes, they do all have fairly elaborate front entries leading down the center of the lawn. We're not proposing anything of that extent. They do have fairly extensive, larger paver driveways substantially wider than what we're proposing. Uh, most of these homes do have pools with patios and pavilion extensions, so you know, we are within the harmony of the community and uh, you know, improving. If you look at this photo, it looks like, you know, his is the, his home is the one to be improved out of the left and right side, which is exactly what we're doing here with this project. Um, and Mark, if you could continue a little bit further, just some side profile views. And then I do have some actual uh photos of what some of these material structures look like, so uh we had gone through the photos of the home already. Uh, front, you could see the
Mr. 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 Tal.
Yes.
Can you go back a couple of the overheads? I wanna see the setbacks of the neighbors.
Absolutely. Go up a little bit further, Mark. So let's zoom in right there. Uh so you see the neighboring driveway is fairly close to the property line on their left. I'd say potentially closer than ours is proposed. And uh, if you go down a little bit further, Mark, we could see the pool locations. So the neighboring home on the right, their pool is in the far right corner of their property. Pretty much, um, I did look at a map of the lot sizes of the neighboring homes. Um, twenty-six Alexis Drive, our property, um, you know, in discussion. And the neighboring home on the right do have, uh, you know, similar sized properties. Uh, twenty-six Alexis Drive, the house is set back further, which really is, in my opinion, causing the need for this variance. You can see from this visual, the neighboring home is closer to the street than Mr. Teresiano's home. So therefore, we have less of a rear setback just based on the way the home was built.
Uh, one question for you, your sketches are very nice. Uh, the plan submitted does not show any areas of landscaping. Uh, is it your testimony that all the areas where you're showing landscaping to be installed will be installed? We're not saying it's gonna be exactly those plants you got, but those areas will have landscaping.
That is correct, and Mark can pull that plan up again, and it does define landscaped areas along the entire rear of the patio and side, but we don't need to do that right now, but it is on the plans. And I think going forward, um, you know, if requested, we would be happy to um show a little more detail as to the plantings on the three perimeter sides of the yard.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let's go back a little bit, Mark, nature of page forty-one, if that's uh maybe the pavilion. Okay, now that's, I I just wanted to show here. So you see the kids' toys along the rear of the yard. I'm sorry, Mark, if you go back to forty-one. There is no true level area for us to use the yard. So that shed retaining wall in the very far background is essentially the grade change in the property. I mean, you could see the kids' toys on a slope and you can see the distance from the house to the property line. So we're looking to gain usable space of this yard. And then, Mark, if you could continue towards the um w- exactly, thank you. Uh, this is just a sample of the paver materials being installed. It's a standard, you know, slab in the paver industry. We're going with a chestnut brown earth tone, which matches the siding on the home. We could continue down, Mark. Uh, edging on the side to the driveway, paver edge decorative, chestnut brown, matching the pavers. Retaining wall block in a chestnut brown. This is a decorative looking wall, both on the sides of the property and rear of the property. So we're not installing an eyesore of a industrial inexpensive commercial style retaining wall where many people would to save the cost. We are installing a pretty decorative retaining wall on all sides of the property. So in the rear, the wooded lot is going to be a decorative retaining wall and on the sides of the property as well. And then we have a wall block here as well, decorative wall block being used for the outdoor kitchen improvement and the pillars around the rear of the property. Uh, coping on the pool caps on the walls, again, a decorative uh feature in a contrasting chocolate brown, uh, which is slightly darker than the chestnut brown that we're proposing um as the color theme. This is a visual of a life-size exact replica of the fourteen by twenty-eight pavilion that we're proposing. I'm sure many of the members of the board may have a unit like this or visited a home with a unit like this. It is a prefabricated unit. And we could continue onward. This is the prefabricated guest fireplace that we're proposing. This is the hot tub that is being proposed. It's again fairly low in height and elevation in comparison to a freestanding unit, which would be closer to three or more feet above grade. So um, and again, on the right side of the property, we need the passageway around the hot tub. And that's my last slide that I'm looking to go over. We did all of our due diligence as far as no presence of wetlands and so on. Um, if anyone has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Mark Weaver.
Hey, uh, Justin, um, on the south side of the property, you do have an area where you have the fence. There's actually two fences. It's a vinyl going around the pool filter. And you have screening shrubs there. Are they emerald green arborviters?
Uh, they're green giant abrevites with the intention of being deer resistant.
Yeah, I agree, cuz that was my concern was
And also growing quick and providing privacy to the homeowners and as well as, you know, ensuring that our improvement is not visible to the neighbors.
No, I think that's a good choice cuz as Mr. Gurkhan um said earlier that he so, we could see the picture where the deer seem to be enjoying the emerald green, so I'm glad to hear that.
Any other questions for uh for Justin?
Mr. Rodriguez.
Not at the moment.
Okay, Mr. Agar.
Uh, Chairman, I have a a question. With the addition of the pavers throughout the backyard, is there any potential for runoff to be flowing either north or south into the neighbor's property? If so, could that be mitigated so that it flows east into the wooded area? Maybe, you know, Mr. Tall or somebody could provide some testimony regarding that.
Probably Mr. Lever would be better on that.
I I think one question with that, though, is I think along that whole rear property line, you got a two-foot-high wall with it, so that, you know, you're gonna have to collect the drainage inside of that wall because there's no way for it to flow through.
Correct.
So, Mr. Lever, where do you plan on having the water flow?
It's basically in the rear left corner of the property where the grass is. There are other areas where the grade is higher than the wall. Um, the pool patio, the pavilion, the um surfaces there are higher than the wall. But as you move into the back corner, the ground surface is a little bit lower than the wall, so that water would never leave the property and head off to the woods.
And that's where you're putting the um
The drainage.
The the drainage basin?
Yeah.
And if I could just add, that was the reason that we designed that rear of the patio with landscaping between the patio and the retaining wall because that is where our water collection is, so it doesn't run off. It's being kept within the property. So you know, in my opinion, that was the reason it was so important for us to push the retaining wall as far to the rear as we can uh so that it's collecting the water within the landscaping bed within the property.
Mr. Parisi, does that answer your question, sir?
It does, I guess. And and is there anything collecting the runoff off of the outdoor pavilion or is that just gonna be flowing?
That has another system. And would be tied into the to the recharge along with the gutters on the rear of the home, as Mr. Lieber had uh mentioned earlier that we would
Alright, I appreciate that. I mean, overall, the renderings and everything that you presented to the board was very well done and gave us an overall aesthetic as to what the applicant intends to do. And I mean, it looks like a nice improvement to the area. I I would have liked to possibly have seen them maybe not encroach into all the setbacks throughout the, almost nearly the three sides of the of the property. But I I I do understand, you know, what the applicant's trying to do with improving his property.
Thank you. And it's mainly, again, the encroachment is the result of the retaining wall, which is providing landscaping bed between mo- most of the patio areas and the retaining wall to collect the water and also the function of the fence going on top of the retaining wall uh to maintain a six-foot height from within the property. So if that fence was below the retaining wall, you'd only have a four-foot-high fence from the patio level as it exists today.
Thank you. Fellow board members, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Tal? Mr. Gurkin?
I think we've gotten our questions interjected along with it. Uh, as I kinda indicated before, I think if the if the board should act favorably on this, we think they should be conditioned upon providing revised plans to reflect everything which has been testified to uh with it, cuz a lot of that is not on the plans.
No problem with that, Mr. Gurkin. Mark, you're clear on what what uh Glenn's looking for?
Yes, man.
Yeah, and same same goes for the drainage, you know, the
Oh, sure.
Question has been raised about where we're picking this up. Mr. Lever can design all that into his underground chambers. Yeah, or whatever type of uh improvement he's going to install.
And I think, Mr. Gurkin, we we it it, like you said, throughout the course of the testimony between Justin and Mark uh and the questions, I think we hit pretty much everything uh uh in in Mr. uh Mr. Conless report, I believe. If there's anything that we didn't, let us know, but I believe we did.
Uh, one other thing that I'll just mention is, I think it was in your small packet of eighty-six pages that you sent.
Uh, did you read the whole thing, Glenn?
Absolutely.
Okay.
With it, uh, excuse me. Um, there was uh that the board should know. Since that's a wooded area in the back, you don't know if it's wetlands. If it's not, uh, they've applied to the DEP and got a letter of interpretation and back from them indicating that there is no wetlands nor any wetlands buffers associated or encroaching onto this property.
Correct. Correct. Um.
Mr. Brodsky, you got it?
I do. I got it. Any it it, any other questions for Mr. Lieber or Mr. Tal?
Not well, Mr. Brodsky, you know, we have our professionals and we have our board members, but we also are going to wind up opening this up to public.
No, of course. I was just trying to get a feel for whether you, Mr. Chair, you wanted to hear the planning testimony from Mr. Lieber now or whether you wanna open it to the public, up to you.
Mr. Hughes, what do you think?
I think we should hear from everybody, right, and then give the public a chance.
I agree. Okay.
Agree a hundred percent.
Okay. Okay, so then, Mr. Lieber, if you could put your planner's hat on.
Yep.
Um, and uh, go through that that testimony with regard to the uh variances sought as part of the application.
Sure. So, you know, we're gonna talk more about planning. At this point, the board has the power to grant variances uh as requested, provide that the deviations are not inconsistent with the purposes of zoning, which are outlined in chapter one eighty-two in the Halitenture Codebook. And in that chapter under Part A, it indicates that the purpose of the ordinance is to regulate development and land within the town, which is really an extension of municipal land use law. Um, and some of those purposes are to provide adequate light air and open space, um, to provide sufficient space for residential uses, um, to promote a desirable visual environment and to prevent um, what we would basically say is a bad design that's um product of the improper use of land. Now, I know when you read the review letter, it sounds like there's a lot of variances requested, but if you look at the scope of the variances uh for especially these walls and footbacks to patios, you know, we're really deficient by a couple of feet. Um, you know, it doesn't seem so bad and, you know, one of the things that is important for us to explain to the board is that this design was not something I was just thrown together, you know, on a whim. Uh, the project really started two years ago, maybe more than two years ago, with an investigation to the presence or absence of the freshwater wetlands. Because if there's a wetlands uh or a wetlands buffer behind this property, that would impact what's proposed. Once it was established that that was not an issue, then we started to look at different options for the design and how to best maximize the yard. And there were many iterations to this plan prior to us submitting the one that you have in front of you. Um, the types of variances we're asking for, although they're bulk variances, we feel that they're C-two variances. So we're not claiming a hardship. We're saying that, you know, these are the flexible variances. Um, and this is driven by a concern for a usable rear yard. Like I said, from the top of the driveway and the back of the house to the rear, it's about twenty-eight to thirty feet. And it does drop in grade, and the only way to raise that grade is frankly to construct a landscape wall. Now, again, these walls vary in height from one and a half to two feet, which in my opinion, wouldn't really characterize it as a retaining wall. Um, and I know other municipalities do distinguish between a landscape wall and a retaining wall, although Howell doesn't. I feel that we could have submitted a design where the fence was on the property line, six-foot-high fence. Then you come in five feet, you have a two-foot wall and your pad is at the top of the wall. Unfortunately, that's a very awkward look uh when you're standing on the patio. It gives the appearance that the fence is only a four-foot fence. You could see right over the fence. Um, and it just seems uh very unusual. So we felt that the better design was to put the fence on top of the wall. Uh, it looks cleaner, it looks nicer, it does give us more usable yard, which is important to the client. So some of the positives of the application are it's certainly a creative, well thought out design. I'm sure you can agree that everything that was selected is aesthetically pleasing. This is going to be done in a very tasteful manner, which will certainly include a significant number of plantings and the use of high end materials. You know, this is being constructed professionally. This is not, you know, a big box store type of thing. And it does provide the owner with really their enjoyment of the property, which is important to them. Now, you know, in these types of applications, when we talk about negatives, usually the types of things that fall into the category negatives involve construction in environmentally sensitive areas. For example, flood plains, freshwater wetlands, building and stream corridors, you know, large amounts of tree clearing, the types of projects that involve hazardous waste or construction of nuisances or noise generating activities, or basically just proposing a use that's not compatible with the area. All those things would be characterized as negatives. And in this particular case, none of those negatives frankly exist in in what's proposed. What we're doing is clearly not out of character with the surrounding area. And I don't think that the board should be pressured that they're going to set a precedent if they grant setback variances in this case because the property is unique with the respect of the dropping grade in the rear yard and the lack of a usable rear yard. One of the alternatives we looked at was just putting the patio straight across the entire backyard to allow for more seating area. And we could adhere to the ten foot patio setback. The problem with that is that it doesn't give any usable grass area for the kids to play. So we're trying to balance the benefits of both providing more seating area around the pool as well as providing some grass area in this lot, which frankly doesn't have a very large rear yard. With regard to the neighbors, I certainly don't feel that there's any detriment whatsoever to the neighbors. Some of the setbacks and the deviations we're asking for are not even perceptible to a passerby, you know, other than someone who was analyzing it on a land survey. We spoke about the lot to the rear of us being wooded. If we, you know, retain our stormwater management, there's certainly no detriment to the lot behind us. And if they ever did subdivide that, it would be expected that there would be a fifty foot perimeter buffer. So in summary, I don't think that what we're asking for is particularly detrimental to your zone plan, to the community at large, the neighbors. You know, summarizing again, there's a couple of just setbacks to walls and patios. We do have the setback to the pavilion, which is completely obscured from the street. I don't think even anybody passing by on the street could see the pavilion to note that, you know, there is a setback related to that construction. This does meet the owner's needs and his family with regard to the usability of the property. And again, this was a very well thought out plan. It wasn't just thrown together and submitted to find out what the board would think about it. We put a lot of work into this over the last couple of years and we feel this is the best design.
Questions, Mr. Chair, for Mr. Lever?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yep. So overall, I agree with Mr. Lover's testimony. I do agree that the variance needed for the fence makes sense. It's a nice decorative fence. I understand that the front yard variance for the sorry, the front fence got approved previously. So the one in the rear makes sense. In terms of the dimensions of the plan, I agree with what, you know, it's been said all around throughout the night that these should be updated on the plans to show the dimensions of all the structures, you know, showing that the setbacks so we could clearly see and, you know, for the board members to have all the information that they need. In terms of impervious coverage, I do think it's a little high. You mentioned it's fifty two point two percent. I understand that Howell doesn't have, you know, an impervious requirement. But, you know, in doing some research in terms of what Farmingdale has, they have a forty five percent coverage. So if possible, this is for a fifteen thousand square foot lot. So in thinking about, you know, a twenty thousand square foot lot, maybe bringing it down to about fifty percent would be better, you know, if it's possible for the applicant to do that. And then one last thing I had is just to make sure that the site is serviced by water and sewer and that it's not septic.
Okay.
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it is water and sewer.
Correct.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Just going back to that drainage question. If we can capture the eighteen hundred and seventy square feet, that would represent about eight point nine percent of the lot area. So, you know, and I'm not trying to play with numbers here, but I'm just saying that your effective lot coverage would have some reduction because it's not the fifty two percent, just direct runoff from the property. We would be capturing about eight point nine percent.
Okay.
I have a question. Is the pool considered part of the impervious lot coverage or not?
Yes, I included it as lot coverage.
Any other questions for the planner?
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Brodsky, we're going to take it to the next phase and open it to public.
Sounds good.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to open the public.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Eileen, please open the public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. Anyone who has questions or comments from this application, please use the raise your hand feature and I'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need audio and video. You will be required to be sworn in and give your name and address. If you're calling in, please use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
I don't see anyone raising their hand.
I have no one raising their hand.
We'll do another thirty seconds. Okay, board members, I don't see anyone raising their hands in public. Can I have a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eileen, we're closing to public.
Thank you. Public portion is now closed.
Mr. Brodsky, it's yours.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have nothing further from my witnesses. The 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 property owner, Mr. Terciano, is here, obviously, and I think we've covered everything. And unless the board has any questions for either Justin or Mark or Mr. Terciano, he's here. But as as you heard, and I think as is evident by what's been presented, this this is has been a very thoughtful process. And there are some challenges that are associated with regard to to the property based on its grading. And so it's taken a lot of work and thought by both Justin and Mark and also the homeowner to sort of overcome those challenges and to come up with a plan that works for the homeowners and also does not have any detriment to any neighboring property owners. All the property owners were noticed. No one has shown up. No one has ever indicated any problems to to Mr. Terciano or anyone else. So, you know, based on that and the planning testimony that was given by Mr. Lever, we would we would ask that the board vote favorably on the application.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky.
Of course.
So my fellow board members, now this is a unique application in that it's a one off based on its positioning on a twenty thousand foot lot. And you know, seeing the overhead views and hearing Mr. Lever saying that he's willing to shave the left side to give us the five foot from the driveway setback. And what about as far as the the shed you're looking for relief, correct, Mr. Lever?
Yes, the shed is about eight feet high. So the setback would therefore be eight feet.
Okay. And then we're looking on the other side. And the other side, you have a little bump out to which you're gonna landscape behind the bump out along the fence line continuously, correct?
Yes, there would be evergreens along that line.
And then to the north, we have a two foot wall with a fence, eight foot high pilons or seven foot high, whatever, right?
Seven foot.
Seven foot high. And and you're what? You're three foot off the property line to the back?
Along the rear of the property, the pylons are a couple inches off the property line.
Okay.
But, you know, the majority of the retaining wall from the face of the wall to the lot line is about a foot. You know, it varies from maybe nine inches to a foot.
Okay. Just laying it out there for fellow board members. So what I would ask the fellow board members to, what's their pleasure on this particular application?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna mention, what about the driveway's got that little cutout? And he said he was gonna straighten that out to make sure it stays within the clearance of the property line.
That's that's correct.
North side of the, you're gonna straighten that out?
Correct. That's one less relief they would need, man.
Right, right. I'm sorry, Mark, Matt.
Oh, no, that's fine. No problem. Well, considering all the testimony put on the record, I agree. Looking at the overheads, that kind of helped it for me because it's kind of consistent with what's going on in that area. We've had other applications like this in other areas of town where we take that into consideration. I agree, you know, updating the plans with some dimensions and things. And of course, the under the ground recharge and the water drainage that they're talking about, obviously, I'm sure in compliance, we need to have plans for all that drawn up. With all those things said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, we got a motion to approve.
I second that.
Mr. Moretti, we got a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Chairman, as I'm sure Mr. Aggar would agree, there's a right way and a wrong way to do a project like this. And Mr. Terciano definitely did this the right way. You know, it's a very unique backyard with limited space. And they said they took three years to develop a plan that meets all of our requirements. And that being said, I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I kind of want to echo Mr. Cantor. I think this was one of the best presented cases I've heard since I've been on the board as far as visuals for us. It made it a lot easier. It looks like an excellent landscape plan and I'm gonna vote yes as well.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
With so much thought, there's no way that they they don't deserve this. I mean, yes, great job, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Parisi?
Yeah, I'd echo my fellow board members. It was a nice presentation and the lack of objectors tells me everything I need to know that the neighbors are obviously in agreement with this project. You know, they had an opportunity to come here tonight and express any opposition. They didn't. The improvements fit the character of that area, especially seeing the aerials of the other homes. I think it's a nice improvement to the property and I wish the applicant the best. Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Sayah?
You know, based on Mr. Parisi's question about the kitchen and how it's going to be piped into the house, I think that's what's done it for me. So I thank you, Mr. Parisi, and I I vote yes. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Yeah, bye bye.
Okay.
Hey, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck. Enjoy your backyard. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I can't tell you what this means to my family and I. I really just thank you for your taking the time and the consideration and giving the approval. Thank you. I appreciate it.
So, Eileen?
Yes.
Today's October third and we have another meeting coming up, correct?
October twenty fourth. However, at the present time, there are no applications scheduled for that meeting. So unless anything changes, that meeting may be canceled. So just keep checking your emails.
October twenty fourth, okay.
Yes.
That's surprising. We had a lot of extension of times that we were gonna hear.
All right. So then, so then my fellow board members.
We're not deemed complete yet.
Okay.
But there's nothing ready for the next meeting. We're at as of right now. So and our next meeting after that, if that does get canceled, is October fourteenth.
November fourteenth.
November.
I'm sorry. Yes, November fourteenth.
Back in time.
Yeah.
So, Eileen, fellow board members, you know, we are looking towards the end of the year where the Rules Committee gets together.
Yes.
So, Eileen, you know, I'm probably gonna be, I'm gonna be, you know, out of town on the fourteenth. And I was hoping during October twenty fourth, we could start talking about it. But since October twenty fourth might not come to fruition, maybe we should discuss a little bit now. What's everyone thinking? What you're thinking, you know, for a date in in December sometime?
Uh, we usually try to have it on a Monday evening because that's usually when the professionals are available. We could possibly have it before the December twelfth meeting, which would be probably December fourth, fifth? Fifth, I believe, if that works. And that's for the chairman, vice chairman, and the secretary and the professionals. If that works, I can send an email out to everybody and get their thoughts.
Why don't we do? Yeah, I mean, that's a good time.
Yeah, that's fine, fine for me.
Let's work around the planners. I think that's more.
Yeah. And usually what we do is then, I don't know if this meets with you, Andy, but we would try to have everything done in a resolution for the last meeting of the year so the board can adopt it.
Makes sense. We'll get it done.
You bet.
All right, then I'll send an email tomorrow about the Rules Committee meeting. And everybody can let me know if they're available that night. We'll make arrangements, okay?
Thank you, Eileen.
Sounds good.
Okay, so then with that, thank you to all professionals and board members. Great evening. And if we don't see you on the twenty fourth of October, then November fourteenth will be the next meeting. May I have a motion to to close?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Okay, second?
All right, second.
Okay, be well.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care.